A few minutes late, actually a minute late.
I was kind of late.
This meeting is open. First on our order of business is always a public comment. If you wish to comment on something that's not on the agenda, now is the time to do that. And when you do wish to speak, now or later in the meeting, please use the microphone over there. That's what connects us to FCTV so that people at home know what you've said and so we all need to use the microphones. We've got ours here, you've got yours there. And please give your name and the matter that you're going to speak on. So, anyone want to make a public comment? Yes?
Hey guys, my name is Eric Krynyevich. I live in West Falmouth. And I came here today on Earth Day to talk about the critical role of the town in the global environment and the importance of this specific body and how I think Falmouth is doing well and could be doing a better job in a number of ways. Discussions of Americans' contributions to climate change and environmental degradation are often owed to individual moral failings of consumption, which we've come to find out, some of which was actually funded by PR firms from oil and gas. The carbon footprint, for instance, was a product of Shell. But putting that aside, in reality, much of Americans' environmental impact is a direct product of the way our land is developed. So look at several closely similarly developed countries, Germany and Japan. Americans produce about two times the carbon output of a German and about two and a half times the output the average Japanese person makes, despite people in those countries enjoying similar, if not better, average standards of living. This is a direct product of land use, the automobile and the method of development that is sprawled across our landscape, requiring the use of automobiles for people to live. Automobiles are often posited as a source of freedom, but where automobiles are the only source of transportation, they're extremely constraining and these issues exist for EVs as well. I myself am a pretty low-income resident, and for me, my car is a major source of stress because I never know the next big bill. I want to speak in particular to several decisions that the town is planning, is making, that I believe is contributing to car dependency and ultimately environmental impact in a number of ways. First, I want to look at sections of downtown and east Falmouth, especially those that will be served by the new sewer project recently voted upon. Many areas are still zoned for single-family zoning, even though they're within a reasonable walk and very short park ride along low-speed limit roads to shopping, employment, and food. I think the planning board should be looking at how we can enhance allowing redevelopment in these core areas in order to have more affordable housing while discouraging sprawl in peripheral areas. These would include things such as allowing duplex conversions, form-based code, reducing regulations for redevelopment of lots, and permitting auxiliary housing units, like a couple that are being voted on here today. I want to express my support for these auxiliary units that are being voted on, that are near the downtown, within access of town services, and affordable, not just in terms of the unit, but also affordable long-term because they're already served by services and near many of them. I also want to speak in opposition to some proposed development along the periphery of the town, especially proposed privatization and development of town publicly-owned forest land at zero West Falmouth Highway. This lot is far from town for a walker or cyclist, it's not served by public transit, and could not be well-served by public transit due to the configuration of roadways. It would both produce actually unaffordable housing when you calculate all costs of ownership and living there. And it also cuts down sections of public forest that is highlighted as wildlife corridor and is going to require additional infrastructure such as septic or sewer that even in the most dense part of the town, where it's serving 600 parcels, cost $60 million. And I imagine that the cost for a parcel in West Falmouth would exceed $150,000 per parcel comparing relative density of the two areas. I also want to speak in praise of this committee in terms of downtown core mixed-use development that's been passed for Davis Straits and sections of Main Street. I think these are really awesome ways to enhance affordability and environmentally conscious development styles that'll produce strong, resilient community. And I really want to just question the general idea that we want sprawling, single-family development on the peripheries of town. I recently heard about efforts by land conservation groups on Cape Cod saying the amount of land available for conservation is dwindling. I think that we should take a hard look at the ways we can make development in the downtown easier while preserving forested land and generally reducing those regulatory hurdles. Thank you guys for your time. I hope Earth Day is a good chance to reflect on your role in a more sustainable, healthy, and happy community. Thank you, and any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I hope you understand that we're not supposed to comment on public comments.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
But I have a suggestion. You should run for the planning board.
You should, and we had an open seat, but it's too late.
Well, next year or whatnot in the future, yeah, yeah. Good to meet you guys.
Could you please give me your name again?
Yeah, Eric Krynyevich, which is H-R-Y-N-I-E-W-I-C-Z.
What?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks guys.
I have a question. Are you representing a group? Is this your effort personally?
No, it's just my effort, yeah, yeah. I woke up and it was Earth Day and I was like, why don't I come down and talk about some stuff? I had been reading it, town planning documents and stuff.
I applaud you for your effort. Thank you very much.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
I hope we hear from you again. Okay, moving on with the agenda, the minutes.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of March 25th, 2025, and April 7th, 2025, as approved, as written.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Thank you very much, Paul. Okay, first on our agenda, tonight's agenda, actually, I think we're probably going to be whipping right through it. All of you probably got copies of the things that the planning board has done. There's not a lot of surprises coming. The first thing that we're going to look at, the applicant is James McLaughlin, a plan of land to create two lots, dividing lots A into Lot 1 and Lot 2 in Hatchville Road. Who is speaking for that?
Madam Chair, if I may, I will speak on the behalf. So this is a plan of land for the town of Falmouth. Yes? Thank you.
This is a very strange-looking second lot.
Correct.
Two streets.
So this plan of land proposes to divide a very large parcel into a buildable parcel and an, or a buildable lot, I should say, and an unbuildable parcel. So let me just show you what that means.
The big lot is just short of 10 acres, and the little lot is how much?
The little parcel is just over 10,000 square feet. So as you can see, the lot in question, or the property itself, is this outline here.
Yeah.
The effort is to divide up, I'll zoom in here, up at the top, to essentially carve off this piece of land as an unbuildable parcel and leave the remainder of the lot in its current condition. It meets the requisite frontage for the zoning district, and as you know, that is the test for an approval-not-required plan before you.
Can you zoom out just a little bit so I can want to see the uses and the abutting land, why they're carving that off?
Yeah, why are they doing this?
I just, I just need to see it. I probably can figure it out.
Does that help?
No, in more, I want to see what the uses are on the, they're carving the pond, that's what I wanted to see. So they're, they're basically taking this pond and the abutters to those other lots so they're no longer abutters from them.
Right, so this, this property will become part of the, it'll be donated to the town. This is in support of the recent town meeting article, Article 39, where the owners of the property are donating it to the town for work that the Conservation Commission is currently doing in the Kuna Mesa.
So the owners of the new lot won't even have them as abutters? I'm just trying to figure what they're doing, I think.
Oh, okay, you answered my question.
Yeah, looked up, that was, that's a good idea, I just want to understa, I could, I could buy it so fast I couldn't see it.
Sorry.
I have bad eyes.
Just a point of clarification, the parcel A is not shown on this drawing. I presume parcel A includes A, 1, and 2?
No, parcel A is actually unfortunately mislabeled on this plan. So Lot 2 is not actually a correct way to label this piece of property because it is unbuildable, which by definition makes it a parcel. So the plan itself, the corrected plan that we have on file currently, says parcel A. So it's currently shown correctly.
But parcel A, as described in the write-up, includes both those parcels, even though it's not shown on the drawing.
I think it just means the...
It is, it is just this piece here. Parcel A is just this piece.
It's the little shaved part, just that little piece.
So this lot...
Both A and 2 and 1 is A.
No, it happens to be written there because there's space for it. But it doesn't include it.
Lot 1 is this whole thing.
Right.
Parcel A is that little piece that they're carving off.
Okay, the write-up is confusing.
Oh, that may be, but you can picture it now?
I'm in favor of this, I just, there's a clarification there.
I understand.
I think it's a good idea to do this, but when it's not shown on the drawing, and it seems to be different on the write-up, I was a little confused.
Sure.
Let's see if we can get a motion and then a discussion. Is there anyone from the public who wants to speak on this? Hi, can we have a motion?
I move that the planning board accept...
Endorse.
Endorse, thank you. I knew that wasn't the right word.
I was wondering why we're talking so much about this. Who's just gonna do this?
Endorse the approval not required, not required by James McLaughlin, plan of land to create two lots dividing Lot A into Lot 1 and Lot 2 at zero Hatchville Road.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that passes, thank you.
And for clarity's sake, that motion also included the verbiage without regard to zoning compliance or buildability. Is that correct?
I want to explain, I really asked that question for my own personal interest to understand what's going on. I probably shouldn't have asked that, but whatever, that's why I did it.
I'm glad you did because I was curious. I've never seen anything such a tiny little shavings. Okay, moving on. Now we're going into public meetings. We've got 1, 2, 3, 4, I believe, approval-not-required. And the first of them is Edward Lewis, site plan review application to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit at 31 Yale Drive. Paul, we have a notice?
Yes. Notice this public meeting was published on April 4th, 2025, and 40 abutters were sent. A notice by irregular mail.
Do we have the abutters here? No, not for this one. Okay. There appears that we have been given a draft motion because the applicant has met all of the bylaw requirements for an ADU. Is there anyone who would like to discuss this application?
I have a quick question, just, I think you announced this as another approval-not-required?
Yeah.
Isn't it?
No, it isn't.
Public meeting.
No, it says it's a public meeting.
It's by right hearing. So I was, I know what to say at different times, I was just being, I'm all set. Well, go ahead. It's not an approval-not-required, it's a, it's an A and, it's a accessory apartment which is by right, which means they really, it's like approval-not-required, but it's not the same thing.
But it's not anymore since the state law, okay.
Site plan review application.
Language confused, I didn't mean to, I knew what you were saying.
I'm learning.
So am I.
I'm careful.
I'd like to make an announcement for the public. Because the decision that we most likely are going to be reading is somewhat abbreviated. And I really want to assure the public that our staff and the board studies all of this. We get referrals from all the different committees and boards around, and based upon that, we give our recommendations. So I wanted to assure the public of that and the people who are here, and the fact that if they want to see everything, they can come in to the planning office or they can look at it on the planning website.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, I just had a question on the site plan. The site plan prepared by Collins Civil Engineering shows Yale Drive and shows the property, does not show the location of the detached accessory dwelling unit. If I'm misreading it.
I thought there was an idly bitty logo on it.
No, the drawing itself, not the logo.
I think that's because it's above the existing garage.
Yeah, and there's the existing garage.
That's his existing garage, an existing three-bedroom house, but does not show the detached accessory dwelling in it.
You have the live plan right here?
It's in the garage. It's in the garage, okay.
It's in the garage.
That's right on the screen, right there, right?
Yeah, it's on the plan.
I can answer any questions if you need, if I can help.
Thank you. Madam Chair, would you like the applicant to summarize the application?
Would you like to summarize your proposal?
I mean, I can.
Is there anyone on the board who has further questions about it?
Everyone should learn how to do this.
I think throwing people off is the detached, where it's already a detached garage, but the ADU is going into that detached.
But I think it's important for the public to realize that you can come up here, speak for yourself, and get it done. Please, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Russell Crockford. I work with GMP Juro Architects and I'm here representing the owner of the property. Just for clarification, there's an existing three-bedroom ranch house in the front of the property, and there's an existing somewhat dilapidated garage structure. So the garage structure was redesigned to create the proposed ADU. Essentially, it was all rebuilt in the footprint. We didn't change the footprint, although then, the original garage structure had a lean-to that went almost all the way to the property line. That lean-to structure was removed, and what's remaining is the 540-square-foot footprint that we used for the ADU design. But essentially, the structure's been all replaced, a couple walls remained, and everything is brand-new. And then for the bedrooms, what we did is we eliminated a bedroom in the existing three-bedroom ranch. We opened up a doorway, we've run that by Gary Street and the health inspectors approved that, so we maintain, you know, three bedrooms and we're not adding any additional bedrooms to the property or the septic system. I guess we can scroll down a few. So that's the proposed structure. Again, it was built or designed in the exact footprint of the existing structure that was there. This plan's hard to see, but this is just a quick little outline or plan of what the existing ranch house was, with some information on opening up a doorway to eliminate one of the bedrooms. And the existing house has living space in the basement that got the square footage number up, so the ADU met the requirements of the 50% rule. And that's all been approved with the, with the town.
Right, I can read that it has been all been approved. I'd like to ask you a question, though, just for my own information, not questioning your project. How long did it take you to go through the permitting process once you had your plan ready and you came down to get, to find it approved? How long has it taken you to reach this stage?
I think it's to get here, been, what, six weeks since we filed, maybe two months? Two months to six weeks. So, yeah, I guess a little bit unknown is what the process was going to be. You know, we thought the by right was just something that would be done administratively in the department, didn't realize that we had to come for a hearing. So that was just something that kind of caught us off-guard. And then, you know, collecting all the information and establishing documentation on the existing house, which we didn't really have prior to having to submit it for this hearing. So there was some additional work that we had to do, and then, you know, compile all that, do the application, and then get on the docket. So, but moving forward with the next one, we'll know ahead of time that we need a little more documentation than what we had, and we'd be prepared, so we'll probably go quicker.
Perhaps, because the town is interesting, we are interested in streamlining as many processes as we can. And now that this is a by-right process, it's something that we can consider, because I didn't think that it would take two months to get here once you had your plans. But now I've learned that it does, so it's, you know, that will be a topic of conversation. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Yeah.
Any additional questions?
Any questions, concerns? Paul?
Yeah, I noticed the review from the health department refers to the leach field. Is that going to be part of the conditions?
I believe the septic's brand-new and already installed.
I can read it if you'd like.
Well, you've got a copy of the conditions.
I believe it's a brand-new three-bedroom septic that's been installed.
They went off the health department anyways.
Right.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So with this application, the health department initially sent us a referral ahead of consulting with the applicant, and then we reviewed or received an updated referral, which is included in your staff report packet, an email from the health department indicating that all is good. So there's, there's no concern from the health department. It's just a older referral that had to be updated, that's all.
So it won't be a condition, because it's all acceptable. So could we hear the motion? Bob?
Okay. Draft, April 22nd, 2025, motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of equity land investments for the construction of a detached one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit located at 31 Yale Drive under Section 240, 12.2.
I don't think they can hear you.
Site plan review of the zoning bylaw. ADU building elevations and floor plans show the following findings and conditions. General proposal, the applicant is proposing to construct a detached one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit. The principal dwelling is currently three bedrooms, however, the applicant is removing a bedroom in the principal dwelling and transferring it to the ADU, which means the total bedroom count for the property with the ADU will remain at three bedrooms. The 540-square-foot accessory dwelling unit will be 36% of the principal dwelling, which complies with Section 249.1C5 of the zoning bylaw. Parking, the site plan shows room for parking for both principal dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit, therefore complying with Section 249.1C and Section 240.14.1.1E of the zoning bylaw respectively. Abutter and public comments, there were no letters or of opposition received nor comments made during the board's public meeting. Board general finding, compliance with ADU and site plan review bylaws, the board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements of Sections 240.9.1 and 240.12.2 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions, standard condition, modifications of plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if modification of this decision is necessary. Two, standard condition, stormwater, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, but as our public right-of-way utilities. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The applicant shall see the engineering division to address assignment for the new building prior to applying for a building permit. Upon completion of the construction, the applicant shall post the address for this building per Section 99.1 of the zoning, of the town code. The project shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code as determined by the building commissioner. ADU rentals, period, shall not be less than six months, and weekly, monthly rentals, so-called summer rentals, are expressly prohibited. Number seven, lapse pursuant to section, condition lapse pursuant to Section 240.12.2 of the zoning bylaw, this site plan review decision shall lapse three years from the date it is granted. If substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced, except for good cause, the determination of good cause shall be made by the planning board. The applicant shall contact the excesses office for an inspection of the ADU prior to certificate of occupancy.
Do we have a second? We have a second?
Second.
Two seconds now, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
This is approved. I'd like to say that the standard conditions that Bob, Larry just read are standard conditions. So that reading them for each one of the applicants tonight, we don't really need to do that, because I'm sure that you're all going to be getting printed copies, if you haven't already, of this entire thing. So you'll have in hand what you need for your documentation of your project, and the public can understand that each of the proposals that we're going to be looking at is meeting the standard conditions, just so we don't have to keep doing that over and over. So, we're ready to move on. The next one. The applicant is Mark Ross. Is he here tonight? Yep. Site plan review application to construct an attached accessory dwelling unit in the basement at 268 Pine Crest Beach Drive. That's on Jenkins Pond?
It is.
It is, yeah.
It's on Street West.
Paul? Yeah, well, we have the notice.
Yes. Madam Chair, this, the notice of this final meeting was published on 4/25, and 33 abutters were notified by regular mail. Thank you.
Jim?
Jed, does this meet all the guidelines?
It does, yes.
It does meet all the guidelines, but let's hear what the project is. Would you like to come?
Is this attached or detached?
It is a...
It's attached. It's attached.
I'm sorry?
And you can just roll. Thank you.
You did.
Hi, my name is Mark Ross. This is a rental unit that I own that we're putting another ADU in the basement. We stayed within the structure of the current building, so we didn't build anything bigger on the property. We're just making a space more effective in the, in the basement for a one-bedroom apartment. We took one bedroom from the upstairs and we reapplied it to the basement, so we're taking one bedroom out from upstairs and making it for the three-bedroom still.
Moving downstairs.
Can you hear me?
What about, what about the owner-occupied portion of this?
Owner-occupied?
Yeah.
How do you mean?
Is there any requirement that be owner-occupied under the new state rule?
There's no requirement for owner-occupy.
There's no requirement, okay. So that's gone.
Right.
Okay. And I have one other question. These are really nice pictures that you took and that you supplied us with, but it looks as if it's already there.
What's already there?
That the, the change that you're proposing...
Oh, no, it was, for whatever reason, the house had an existing garage, but in that garage, it had two sliding doors. I don't know what it was used for.
Wow.
So, but it's still an empty today, still an empty space that hasn't been converted yet.
Oh, okay. Very fancy windows. Any further questions?
I do.
Paul?
Yeah, I have a question to town planner. The review of the engineering department, engineering division at Department of Public Works refers to note that the site plan is not endorsed and is nine years old. Why is that significant?
I believe you may be referring to this application?
There's an updated site plan, did you have that?
Mark Ross.
I'm looking for it now.
Yeah, so the site plan, it's actually the first page.
That was the existing one, though, right?
Right, but for a site plan with an accessory dwelling in the basement, there would be no change to the exterior, which the applicant has indicated, and there is an endorsement, or there's an engineering stamp located on the, on the plan, it's shown up on the screen. I cannot speak to...
I'm just curious why, I've never seen that before.
Yeah, I, I can't speak to why that was included, but as you can see, it's...
That's only a recommendation.
And, and again, because the, the work is included in the basement and there's no site work being performed, the jurisdiction is really limited to that, just making sure that there's enough off-street parking, which...
I thought you were testing me to see if I read this stuff before I come here.
And you did?
Are we requiring a site plan, you know, a plot plan with these now?
Well, I'm surprised that we're requiring so much, but I think we're all learning. What are we requiring under the new state law? The state, we had our own ADU law for several years, how many years? Eight years?
Yeah, but for discussion, I think our own ADU law allowed to bring up the town plot plan in a sketch, hand-drawn, what they were doing, without hiring an architect and engineer. That's the way we started this.
On the other hand, it is not, whatever we started with, it has now changed, and now we're getting applications under the new state law that are by right, that allow a larger ADU than we were allowing, that took away the requirement that it be owner-occupied for some part of the year. What other changes did it make, Jed? Those are the main ones.
Yeah, I mean, it reduced, it got rid of the owner occupancy, it increased the square footage and the lot percentage. It, it also provided the fact that it is a by-right process, which we had before as a special permit, if it were a detached situation. It allows for multiple ADUs on a property via special permit. I could probably go on and on, but that's the last one I remember.
Okay, but those are the main ones?
Yes, yes.
Really?
Can you restate the last one, please?
So for clarity purposes, the reason we require site plans typically is for a detached accessory apartment because it's a brand-new structure typically. So that brand-new structure has to be placed on the lot, setbacks have to be shown to make sure that they're abiding by the requirements of Article 11, et cetera, et cetera. But in a situation where it's within the existing dwelling, the only reason we require the site plan is to ensure that there's off-street parking, which the bylaw requires that there be one spot for the new ADU.
So given that that's why we're requiring a... So given that that's why we're requiring, it does seem to be a candidate for administrative approval going forward.
I think so. I think we could, we can simplify the process, but I think that we should...
Not today, but...
Correct. Talk about it another time.
Okay.
What I want you to restate really quickly is you said that there's more possibility with a special permit, more than one ADU on a piece of land.
Correct.
That something needs to sink into everybody here. That's new.
But something...
Sounds like tiny houses.
Well, it has ADUs defined.
I think, I think perhaps...
Something that, something that we, when we first initiated this bylaw was people wanted protection for their property. So that's why we did site plan landscaping, the design of the building, the location of any detached or addition to that, as well as parking. So, I don't know, do we give that up now?
No, because I think the state also says, the new ADU state law says, that towns may add their own requirements if they wish to. And I do know that the one I would be interested in requiring, continuing to require, is that the style of the ADU match the style of the main building, so that it looks cohesive on the street, that it's not a new aesthetic element in that neighborhood.
Madam Chair? I, I agree, but I think, to town planner, do we have to do a town meeting approval to make that change to a state law? I mean, we already have it in our law.
Change to the state law?
Well, they, they're saying you don't need it, we want to, well, qualification.
The state law says that you can have site plan approval if you want to.
Right, but the, I'm talking about the architectural design.
So I would recommend two things. One, that we move on from this conversation and just focus on the application at hand. And two, we put the ADU item back on the agenda for a future discussion after the attorney general comes back with their ruling on our proposed amendments. And that won't be till late night, give or take.
In that case, I think we had reached the part where we're going to hear a motion.
Yeah. Okay, draft, April 22nd, 2025, motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Mark Ross for the construction of an attached one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit located at 268 Pinecrest Beach Drive under section 240 12.2, site plan review of the zoning bylaw. All the site plan, ADU building elevation and floor plans have been submitted. The proposal is a general proposal. The applicant is proposing to construct an attached one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit in the basement of the existing single-family dwelling. The principal dwelling is currently three bedrooms, however, the applicant is reconfiguring the floor plan to remove a bedroom, which means the total bedroom count for the property with the ADU will remain at three bedrooms. The 608-square-foot accessory dwelling unit will be 27.4% of the principal dwelling, which complies with section 240-9.1C-5 of the zoning bylaw. All the other findings are standard for this type of motion. Butters and public comments, there were no letters of opposition received, nor comments made during the board's public meeting. Conditions, number one, modifications of the plan shall be constructed as approved.
These are all standard, aren't they?
Yeah, I'd just like to read this one, though.
Oh.
Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this, of this decision is necessary. And all the rest are the standard conditions.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good plan. Okay, next. Kevin P. Duffy and Mary Beth Duffy, you're here. Trustees at 464 Davisville Road Realty Trust, site plan review application to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit at 464 Davisville Road. There's a notice, Paul.
Madam Chair, the public reading, meeting notice for 464 Davisville Realty Trust was published on April 4th, 2025, and 27 of butters were sent a notice by regular mail.
Okay. Kevin, is there anything you'd like to say about this?
I mean, I don't need to step in it and, I don't need to step in it and, you know, detract from you hoping, hopefully passing this very quickly. So, you know, I had a presentation prepared like we normally do. I would just say this is a slightly unusual situation because it's, one, it's detached, and two, it is the repurposing of an existing workshop or a portion of that workshop into an ADU. So while the ADU matters are now, in many cases by right, we are also applying to the zoning board because of existing special permits that condition the use of this workshop. So we'll, we're before this board now, and hopefully have approval on the site plan review, which is, again, to convert a portion of this existing workshop space, barn workshop, into an ADU. And we'll also be going to the zoning board, I believe it's May 15th, for a modification of the existing special permits. There are three existing special permits on this property.
There seems to be some changes to the exterior of the main building.
There are some, those were approved administratively by the zoning board some months ago. They are making some changes to the exterior, mostly architectural. They're building some dormers in nature, but nothing significant and no addition to bedrooms there. And then we have this additional existing accessory structure. What happened here was the property lines were adjusted over the last 20 years, and this was an existing home, but when they changed the property boundaries, they removed the kitchen from this, so we still have three bedrooms in this accessory structure. It is not an ADU because it's, it has, it lacks cooking facilities.
Yeah.
But what is proposed here within this structure is an ADU.
Okay, so the only approval you're looking for is for the ADU?
Yes, that is all we're here before this board for this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions from the board on this? Pat?
I have a comment because our approval that we're planning on says that the plans which we have here dated February 13th were revised, the latest revision as of March 19th, and this does not show the latest revision date on it. And I brought that to Jed's attention. I don't know what the revision was between the two.
So I can, well, we did submit the revised plans to the planning board some weeks ago. Basically, we added, we corrected the zoning, because it listed as AGA, corrected it to residential, and we added a notation of domestic well which services the workshop and the accessory structure, because we had a referral from the water department stating that they would need an independent line, but we noted that that was on domestic, on a domestic well. And there was a revised water department referral, which, which was issued after we resubmitted the plans or submitted the revised plans, which said if well water is utilized with this dwelling, there cannot be any cross-connection between existing town potable water and the well water systems.
So the existing well can be used for this structure?
Yes.
Oh, because I had the opposite feeling after reading it, so...
No, my impression was basically you can't, you can't connect a building that's on town water to well water as well, but only the front house is serviced by, only the main dwelling is serviced by town water. The accessory structure and the ADU or the workshop are both serviced by the well and will continue to be serviced by the well.
Thank you. That clarifies it because I had the exact opposite interpretation of what was going to be allowed.
Other questions? I guess not. Okay, could we have a motion?
Draft, April 22nd, 2025, motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Kevin P. Duffy and Mary Beth Duffy, trustees of 464 Davisville Road Realty Trust, for the construction of a detached one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit located at 464 Davisville Road under section 240-12.2, site plan review of the zoning bylaw. All the findings are listed. I'm not going to read them. All the conditions are the standard conditions. So I guess we're just going to vote on it.
I guess we're just going to vote on it. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
So you're approved? Thank you very much. It looks like a good one, it's an interesting building.
It, it really is an interesting site. And getting into some of the history, going through the special permits, it's, it's pretty fascinating what they've done with it over the past, really, 20-some-odd years. But Mr. Duffy and his wife just purchased this about a year and a half ago and are really working on making it their own as opposed to, this was the old Riccadelli, Riccadelli property some years ago, and then it's been, it's changed hands a few times since then.
You've got a lot to work with there. Thank you. Next, the applicant is Walter H. B. Platt. Site plan review application to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit at 26 Drift Road. This would be in West Falmouth.
Madam Chairman, Walter Platt?
Mr. Platt, good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, sorry to interrupt.
There's a notice?
There's a notice.
Notice of this, this particular project was again issued on April 4th, 2025, and 10 of butters were notified by regular mail.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So the existing dwelling built about 1915 is here on the westerly side of Drift Road. There is an existing garage right here on the easterly side of Drift Road. We're planning to take down the existing garage and then build a new garage with an ADU above it. There's the front elevation. Hopefully, that's considered to be in keeping with the original house. It'll be two, two bedrooms and about 860 square feet. Happy to answer any questions.
And this is going on the same footprint as the existing garage?
It is not. It's a different footprint than the existing garage.
And those are the same materials as the existing house and colors and, yeah. Other concerns, questions?
Yeah, something that needs to be pointed out because this is split. And how was it determined, what's the front yard?
Aye.
Okay, and so we have a letter here that was requested, and it was Gary Fluter, the, the, excuse me, Gary Street.
Building Commissioner.
Yes, thank you. I'm stumbling all over on this. And he says that, attached as a sketch identifying the area we believe to be the front yard per Part II of the bylaw front yard definition, which is the area between the front, the lot frontage adjacent to the street lines drawn from the two front corners of the building, parallel to the lot frontage until they intersect with the side lot line. And this would result in the existing garage and proposed accessory structure being outside what had been determined by this, determined to be the primary front yard and therefore allowable under the zoning bylaw. This is a strange and unusual situation, so...
Well, it is because the, the secondary structure, the new structure, is across the street from the existing structure. So I'm assuming what you just said means that the front yard is on the primary structure's side of the road.
Correct.
Right.
It is. And the town of Falmouth defines that a lot may have two front yards, and then it's up to the building inspector to determine which is the primary front yard, which then mandates those setbacks and that the secondary front yard is then allowed either side setbacks or rear setbacks.
Okay, and you're, you're square with the building commissioner?
We are.
We are. Okay, good. Any other questions, concerns, have a motion?
Draft, April 22nd, 2025, motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Walter H. B. Platt for the construction of a detached two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit located at 26 Drift Road under section 240-12.2, site plan review of the zoning bylaw. And I'm going to read one of the findings. The applicant is proposing to raise an existing detached garage and construct a detached two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit over a new garage in its place. The accessory dwelling unit proposed at 856 square feet will be 49.5% of the principal dwelling. All the other findings and conditions are standard.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much. So... Four good projects. Okay, we have some discussion items on our, on our agenda for tonight. And the first of them is a new discussion item for us, and I guess we have Melinda to thank?
You do?
For the research.
Yes.
But before we get to that...
Could we ask, please, that you move the conversation out of the room so we can continue with the meeting?
Hello, if you could, if you're going to talk, hello, if you're going to, yeah, either quiet or move out, one or the other. Thank you. We're going to discuss outdoor lighting regulations, which we have not really discussed before, but before we do that, I think that we ought to, we tried to thank Michaela Schumacher, who was leaving the planning department, has left the planning department for her years of service here. And Jed, you are going to give us a rundown of her projects.
Right, so I was going to do that under the next agenda item, but it sounds like you're getting, going out of order. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, because I didn't see Michaela's name, so I just thought I'd insert it.
Sure. So, yes, as you know, or as some of you know, Michaela Schumacher, who worked for the town approximately just over four years as our community development planner, has decided to leave the town. She's pursuing another opportunity with another town. She's now the town planner in Rochester. So, you know, obviously we'll miss all the great work that she did in her position, and she worked on things like four-base coat for the Davis Straits area. She helped tremendously on the recodification effort and all of the zoning bylaw changes that we made after recodifying the zoning bylaw. She and I worked together on the open space and recreation plan update, which we recently got state approval for. And one of the first tasks that she was working on when I first joined the town was administering a CDBG grant. It was a block grant that we received from the state to help local businesses survive COVID, essentially, provide financial assistance to allow them to continue to operate during that period of time that we can barely remember now, it's so far away. So she did a lot of great work here, and so she'll be missed. And so the next steps are to advertise for her position and potentially do some readjusting in the, in the planning department. So that's, those are some things I'm working on.
So you ought to backfill on that position?
Yes, yes, on that part-time position, yep.
Great. Okay. Yeah, Michaela was really, just really, really nice to work with.
Yeah.
Easy to get along with, yes.
Yeah, I think we didn't see her at many meetings, but if you went into the office and asked for help, she was very, very helpful and had her fingers, whatever we needed was great.
Agreed.
Support staff. We'll miss her.
Yeah, and of course, she helped with all of the planning board applications that, that you received during her tenure. So she did a lot of different activities, which that positions sort of a jack-of-all-trades, right, being able to help in whatever facet we needed, so.
Well, she apparently got good training. She's now a town planner.
Yeah, she's...
She's moved up.
Yep, she's great.
Okay, good.
We wish her well.
Yes, we do wish her well, and we thank her very much. I hope she's watching right now. Maybe not.
Maybe she'll watch the recording.
Oh, that'll be good. You could send it to her. So, outdoor lighting regulations. This work was done for us by Melinda, who's not here tonight, but she got to get, did the research, got things together, and Yellow highlighted what she gave us. So we would particularly notice that among the 62 towns in Massachusetts, Massachusetts, I think, has 351 towns, and all of those, 62 towns, already have outdoor lighting ordinances. And when you look at the, the towns, I thought we would probably be looking at mostly, you know, west of Boston kind of towns. They're all over. They really are. It's a good scatter. There are suburban, urban, countryside towns here, but many of them are towns that I recognize and towns that try to take good care of themselves of the 62. Five Cape and Island towns. And the ones in the Cape and Island, Melinda has given us copies of their, the ones that did full bylaws, we now have copies of those. So if you had a chance to review them, and what's your reaction to the two things? One, do you think we should pursue this here in Falmouth? And two, what did you find in these examples that would be useful to us? So, anyone want to start?
I'm going to fess up. I didn't have a chance to look through them.
Okay, that's fair. Not good, but fair.
Question? I generally have been just following the dark sky compliance. I generally have been just following the dark sky compliance that I see all the time. Is this basically what we're talking about, the same thing, or what differentiates from dark sky? What's the difference here?
Yeah, I mean, it varies. So some of the regulations that you see in the packet are very detailed. They talk about lumens and calvins and height of light posts and shading materials that would make it dark sky compliant. So in general, dark sky compliance is that it doesn't shade up or out. It's mostly downward lighting, if you will. So there's a mix of different options here. I will say that, you know, for the most part, at least on the Cape, it appears that a lot of them are considered to be zoning bylaws, or at least they're found in their zoning bylaw. However, as you know, zoning bylaw is, it regulates land use. Lighting is not a land use.
I thought they're mostly in their general bylaws.
I just went through it and counted it by, by a score of four to three, zoning bylaw one. So, so it is a mix. I would recommend if, if there was an interest in doing a lighting bylaw in town, that it would be a general bylaw that applies throughout town and not zoning. Because, again, zoning gets into regulating land use, and lighting is not a land use, so. It's, it's something that you could incorporate into your site plan review requirement, that they provide a lighting plan, that you have certain requirements for what that lighting plan includes, and some of your expectations for, say, an overlay district or a certain part of town. You could go with that, or my recommendation would be a general bylaw that applies to the entire town. But you've got to be very careful, right? So it's, there are different restrictions and requirements for residential use and commercial use and industrial use. So you'd really want to dive into the details of some of how other communities have done it. And we would want to do a little bit more research on which ones are actually good bylaws to, not copy directly, but to use as a template. Because there's a lot of bylaws out there that, you know, they just aren't written all that well, and they're confusing. So we want to spend some time on that to make sure that whatever we produce, if anything at all, it's nice and clear and understandable.
Is there any good reason to limit our comparison to just those on the Cape? I'd like to reach out, I think, a little more.
There's no good reason. It's just past practice. You know, we typically start with the Cape, and then we look at other communities that are similar to Falmouth. So I always look at Plymouth as, as an example, because in my mind, it's a similar community to Falmouth.
And my first thought was all of this. I mean, you got general requirements, you got specific applications, you've got, you know, prohibitions, exemptions, administrative waivers, enforcement, violations and penalties. I mean, it's just, it's way too much. I mean, I, I think it would be simple enough to say that these are the types of lights that we want and we'd be done with it. I, I mean, I thought we're trying to simplify things.
So I'm taking that as a yes, you think we ought to do something, but not like that.
I don't, I don't even really think we need to do anything, but, because, I mean, we recommend that people keep light on their property and downlighting and all that kind of stuff. And, yeah, I'm all for continuing to do that, but to make it so that something is enforceable.
Yeah, difficult.
We can't enforce the things we have now.
John?
I agree. When you read these, they are page after page of technicalities. And always my concern is if we adopt anything similar to this, who's going to enforce it?
Jim?
Is there any way we can get a measurement, like one number that says how far these lights will be seen from the site? And we limit it, because all I really care about is I don't want to be lighting up the sky. I like downlighting, dark lighting. I want to be, to see the stars. And I don't want, I don't care whether it's commercial or residential, I just want to cut down on the amount of light in the sky. Can we have a number that says?
Yeah.
How that works?
Well, that would be, yes, you think we ought to do something.
I think we should do it, but really similar to just getting down to, instead of 30 pages, one number, way to look at it, whether it's making more light.
This is a yes, 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 but simple, simple, simple.
Simple, right. Yes, and more simplified, yes.
Coming this way. Paul?
I haven't reviewed it yet.
Oh, so he's fessing up too.
He is.
I just picked up the booklet this afternoon.
Oh, today?
Right, so did I.
Tom?
I'm along with Jim. I think we should have something, but very simple. Maybe just the shape of the, the housing around it, you know, light is linear. We can't have it pointing that way. But maybe start off small with the general bylaw if we do. But something real basic, like, like they said, it's too hard to enforce. Lot of details in this.
Tremendous. Jed, could I ask you a question? I don't think the planning board actually has the authority to initiate a general bylaw, do we?
You do not.
No. So the only kind of bylaw we can initiate is a zoning bylaw.
Correct.
Or a recommendation to the.
Or we can try to prime it off on somebody else, but we don't know that they would accept that responsibility. So if we actually want to see dark sky, we're kind of stuck with zoning. And in fact, there are others in here who must have had the same problem.
Yeah.
They went with zoning.
My recommendation is if you are concerned about lighting, I would say you'd probably want to start with your mixed residential and commercial overlay district, simply because you've got mixed use. And when you have a mixed use situation, obviously you're mixing commercial properties that are open later than residential, and you may have different lighting standards. So you want to meld those two things together wherever possible and be respectful of both of those uses. Start there. But in your single residential zoning district, I don't, unless you're hearing that there are issues with outdoor lighting in those districts, I would steer clear of that.
Well, I can tell you right now some issues about those kinds of things in a general residential zone where I live. And that's actually what.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
You don't live specifically general residential, it's a spithis.
No, no, about a general, a residential district that has this problem.
All right.
Because I don't live in a general residential district. Right, different. But I did have a lighting problem. And so when I realized that I had a lighting problem, that light was shining only in the winter when the trees, the leaves are down, directly into my bedroom all night long, I was somewhat annoyed. So I went looking through the zoning bylaws to see where, you know, they couldn't do that to me, and there's nothing there. And I was disappointed and came to see Jed and thought maybe we should start looking into it. And then I spoke directly to the people who controlled that source of lighting, and they really did try to make a correction on it, as long as it didn't cost them any money. And it can happen. It can happen anywhere where a property owner becomes concerned about security for his or her property. And they decide, you know, 24-hour lighting is the solution. Jim?
There, there is a way to do 24-hour lighting. And it also complies, you put the lights on the side of the property, down, and you focus just on the house. So it's not going to a neighborhood, but it's more expensive. And in fact, in historic districts, that's what we do. We don't allow floodlights. They require lights from the side coming on the property, so you can only see it on the side. So I'm, I agree with you. There's a way to solve the problem. No floodlights going out, make the lights come in.
Well, I think maybe we should codify the way to solve the problem.
Historic already has that, right? Isn't that a?
Historic does, yes.
Historic does.
I think we, because people don't want to necessarily initiate, but if we initiate putting something together, doesn't matter whether it's in the form of a bylaw or a general suggestion or something like that, and you know where we present it to, and work with them on it to make something happen over time.
I didn't follow that process.
Of course you didn't, because it was too convoluted. I'm saying we'd have to take the responsibility for putting the ideas together like this, number six here on Barnstable. You could start out with the why we want to do something like this.
A process.
Protecting the New England village character, do something like that. And then suggest that whenever a home is built, that it be the, you could say, policy of the town. It's not a regulation that you want to enforce, but it's a town policy, if you will, that downlighting be put in, that the lighting be kept on the property. However we evolve, that we'd like to see it. And then we have something that we can present to the select board that they can consider to vote in as a policy if they choose. Or just ignore it. But then we've done what we can do to help the whole dark sky concept here, or dark earth sky. I mean, my house is, what, a couple of miles down the road, and I see the glow here in town every night.
You're likely, I, I mean, I would imagine you're likely seeing the glow from specific larger land uses rather than single residential, but I can't say that for certain. So that's where I would suggest you'd want to start.
Except there are specific larger uses allowed all over town for different things, municipal buildings.
Correct.
Religious buildings, educational buildings.
That's a big one.
It is.
Right.
You know, so they're there, and I don't think we, one, I'd like to see the zoning, the planning board take responsibility for this, for not doing something complicated, but making it clear that it will be heading toward dark skies as much as we can. And I think if we could all take a look, just, just Google dark sky and read about it. Because I was stunned when I started reading these, and they, oh, boy, this is a morass. We don't need that. There are much simpler ways to say we're concerned about it and make it part of your plans when you come here.
So that's, that's a terrific point, and, and I don't want to jump ahead to the planning board report, but I will. So part of what we propose to do and what we're working on is a total rewrite of your site plan review bylaw. We can include into that things like what Jim was describing. A simple way of addressing whether or not lighting is staying on the property or shining in places where it shouldn't be is a lighting plan. And design professionals can put together a lighting plan pretty easily. And we've done it before. So any application that comes before you through site plan review, it's a requirement to have a lighting plan, and you can work with the applicant to ensure that the fixtures and all of the hardware are dark sky compliant and that all of the lighting stays with on, stays on the property. And is put in places that make sense. So for example, walkways where pedestrians and people who visit the site would go at night, you'd want, you know.
Right.
Pedestrian-scale lighting that's not obtrusive to the neighborhood.
I have a suspicion that the dates that each of these towns adopted something would vary pretty widely. I doubt that few of them go back two decades. So it'd be somewhere in there. But at the time they were, they were creating them, they were kind of pioneering it. And the ones who would, take Nantucket, for example, how many pages was that? You know, so they're trying to cover every event. Just, you don't need to do that anymore. So that's, that's an approach that we could take. Maybe for our, our next meeting, if everybody would just take a few minutes to look at dark sky on the internet?
Just quickly, the technological advances in light, advances in lighting with low voltage focuses so much different in the last two years that anything was done four or five years ago should be totally not even evaluated. I mean, you don't, it just, a lot of the lighting doesn't even need a permit anymore. There's just ways to do it. It's so much cheaper, and we should allow innovation. It's really low lighting.
We just changed our grow lights for, you know, starting little plants.
Yeah.
Because they're so much better, and they're not glaring at you.
I just meant, anything that's five or six years old is probably technologically obsolete.
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to make. I should have just said that, sorry.
Okay, so we have an approach. Anyone have a problem with that approach?
No.
Okay.
Take a look at it.
Okay, planning department changes?
So we touched briefly on Michaela's departure. The other item that you should all be aware of, because I know that some of you were at town meeting, others may not have, have stayed for the entire evening. But Town Meeting did approve a position change for the planning, or for, really for the community development position. We'll call it the community development director position. And so I will be taking on that role as of July 1st. So I'll be overseeing the building department, the health department, conservation, and ZBA, and planning.
And the ZBA?
Yes, and the ZBA, right. So there'll be a community development, well, it's a community development department, and each one of those individual departments, I suppose, will become sort of like a division, similar to the, the way DPW is run. So come July 1st, it'll be a new way of thinking, I guess. And the idea is to create more clarity for property owners. I mean, I'll say this right now, these departments, they, they operate as efficiently as possible. And we all work together on a very regular basis. But you see an example of an ADU tonight, that 26 Drift Road, where it, it was a complicated case that we had to figure out and make sure that it fit within the zoning bylaw and understand exactly how it was going to make its way through the permitting process. And sometimes that can be a challenge for applicants. So the idea would be a, sort of a universal voice and, you know, streamlined permitting so that we can get applications through the process quicker than we already do, which is really quick. I mean, the delay that.
Right, the two months.
The applicants, well, I mean, honestly, a lot of that delay is just making sure on our end that the application is ready for primetime, that it's full and complete. And then we have to advertise in the paper and notify a butter. So that's a good amount of time that we have to dedicate to letting everyone know that there's an application that will be heard on a certain night.
Yeah.
And then, you know, sometimes it just happens to be that, you know, agendas don't line up with that process. So for example, Town Meeting delayed all these ADUs another two weeks. So, you know, we do things as quick as we can. But as you know, people just want to move a project ahead of time, and sometimes they're just not ready to do so. So we have to work with them to make sure it happens, so. Those are some of the changes that are happening in the planning department. Michaela's left us. We need to re-advertise for that position. And my position's going to be changing dramatically come July.
Come July, we're definitely going to congratulate you on your promotion. We'll wait till then.
Steak dinner?
That'd be great. Right, but I do have a question about it.
Yeah.
You'll still be coming to the planning board, won't you?
I will, yes.
Okay.
I'm not leaving.
Just checking. Jim?
Just a comment. In my experience in town, I've had to ask professionals like architects, engineers, what do they think the total process time is to go through a permit with a special permit and everything? And they've delayed it out as two years, because you take all the hearings, the notices, the appeals, and that, that is what the worst-case scenario is. And we're hearing someone to say, well, we could get this done in 60 days, or, or close. That sounds pretty good. I just wanted to put the reference. Because that's the outside opinion of our town, what's the worst-case scenario? You ask them, what do you need for a special permit with appeals on each board, all the stuff you go through, the back and forth. And I have one other thing, I had a, I was dreaming about, daydreaming about how we can improve our town. And I said, well, I watched the select, the ZBA said, well, they're doing the same damn thing we are. Why are we having two boards? And then I watched how much detail they go in and how many things they look at the use. They said, we don't have time for that. We definitely need the two boards. But it is a really complicated, complicated process, and we have two or three dedicated boards with the health department, and good luck.
Thank you.
Well, plus, ZBA is dealing with something very different from what we do.
Well, the use, right. But they, they also correct our stuff too, though.
Yes, they do.
They comment on the site.
For the most part. What they're dealing with are residential property changes. And this is where the, the business and commercial properties come for their site plan review.
They do special permits for everything.
Some of them have to move on if they, yeah. But it, it's different from what they do.
I've watched a few of their meetings, and they, I have a different opinion, but I'll just be quiet right there. I'm all set.
Okay.
Yeah.
Paul?
Will there be an increase in staff to assist the community development director? Because there's a lot of things that you're going to have to do that are outside the current requirements of the staff there. We lost Michaela, who was doing community development coordination. And there's going to be a role to coordinate with all these different departments that's not assistant town planner's role. So is there going to be someone added to assist you in that role?
No, there's not.
Good luck.
Broad shoulders.
You can do it.
It'll, it'll be okay. It'll be okay. Our community development planner position, as, as I went through, typically helped with special projects that we work on, and so we've got a number of those things. Those include zoning bylaw changes, planning work that we're doing, local comprehensive plan update, et cetera. We're looking to transition that role into doing the historical commission review and attending those meetings so that the assistant town planner can help directly on the day-to-day operations, this board's applications, and all of our special projects. So we're making some shifts to make it more efficient within the department itself. Plus, as you're alluding to, we're talking about potentially, at to, um, we're talking about potentially, um, at least it's an idea right now, is making these ADUs that are, um, protected use, making them part of just what the building department can, um, approve and not requiring an applicant to come before the planning board.
Right.
So, it would reduce your workload, which reduces our workload, it makes it quicker for the applicants. Um, and so, those are some of the things that we're going to be working on to make sure that, you know, we can just get people through the, through the process. As long as they meet all the requirements, let's just move them through the process.
So, the building commissioner would be doing, uh, design review as well?
Essentially doing plan review, yes, and they would, there would be consultation likely by, uh, by myself or, um, Melinda as to the architectural, uh, style, but we have to be very careful because the attorney general's office provided, um, or I shouldn't say the attorney general, the, uh, Department of Housing and Livable Communities provided a model zoning bylaw for the accessory dwelling unit, um, the protected use ones, and in that, there was language that indicated that we couldn't require, or a community could not require that, uh, the architectural style of the ADU matched the primary dwelling.
Yeah.
And so, we have to be very careful in the language that we use, and that's why I was suggesting that we wait until the AG's office comes back with our amendments, because we kept that language in there.
Yeah.
So, I'm curious to see whether or not the attorney general will say you can't have that in there anymore, because now these ADUs, especially the protected ones, they're considered, just like childcare, solar, um, educational uses, they are protected, uh, under chapter forty-eight, and so, there's very little that you can do with them. It's,
Yeah, I, I think that if that goes away, uh, there's going to be a lot of pushback, because, uh, the very first one we did was essentially a double-wide planted, uh, next to the house, next to my house.
Yeah.
And I got a lot of blowback from the neighbors saying, what the hell did you guys do?
Yeah.
Yeah, how many hearings did we have on that, too? It was really-
Yeah.
How many what?
Hearings did we have on that? It was a long drawn-out, drawn-out process.
You know, are we going to get people just plopping a mobile home, uh, onto a piece of property?
Oh.
Hey, you know, if there's no design review, you can get a, uh, prefab building, which is essentially a mobile home. Yeah?
Right.
If you're not, uh, concerned with roof pitches and all that, that roof, yeah,
Right.
big deal, you know, and this is a town that does trade on its character. So, you know, just, just my thoughts.
No, and somehow I had thought that the wording in this, in the new state law allowed towns to add, uh, additional requirements to it, and that that would be such an important thing, they wouldn't disallow it.
Yeah, so the, the important qualification here is you're not allowed to deny the application based on that criteria. The question is, can you have the criteria at all? And so, that's why we're eagerly awaiting the attorney general's review to see, will that pass muster? Because if it, if it passes, then we're fine.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, then we've got to go back to the drawing board and consult with HLC to say, well, where's the limit, right? And so, I think a lot of communities are trying to figure this out, just like we are.
Yeah.
Because the state law just dropped, and then the regulations dropped thereafter, and then here came a, a model bylaw that, you know, we don't have a lot of the information that's in the model bylaw, so, there's a lot to do there. But roughly June, we'll, you know, we'll know more, and we'll be preparing for November's town meeting, and that will be one of the items that we'll take on, either if the board's comfortable, just completely removing it and from site plan review, and just giving it to the building commissioner, or adjusting our bylaw to make it as simple as possible.
Okay. Um, planning department report, did you, oh, I'm sorry, Paul.
The, um, article two, a town meeting that was approved, the position that you've been appointed to, did not mention the historical commission. Uh, you mentioned all the different groups that are-
Yes.
-reporting director to you, but-
Yes.
there isn't, that seems to be missing. Is that part of your bailiwick as well?
It will be, yes.
Will be?
Yes. Yep. So, we'll, the planning department will continue to staff and provide administrative, uh, services to the historical commission, which is very similar to what we do for, for this board. It's processing applications and working with the chairman to set up the meeting and then, um, issuing decisions afterward.
And you've been doing administrative approval for them for years.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Well, as far as the additional work is concerned, one way of looking at this, it might not be quite correct, is that in order to coordinate the process of things coming before us, they go before all of the boards that now Jed will be supervising, and he was already coordinating with them. So, now, he's really, um, picking up the authority that really went with that responsibility. So, I think this position change was first recommended, I believe, under town manager Suso, and was not approved by town meeting. Um, I think it wasn't even approved by the select board at the time, but it might have been, but it got turned down anyway. So, but it, it's been simmering there because it's, it's so obvious that those particular, all of those departments that are involved in getting a physical building up and going and running, um, need to work together smoothly.
And they do. I think it's an important component. I mean, we meet regularly on applications to, to review them and to ensure that, you know, because we're human beings, we're going to miss things at times, but that, those meetings are invaluable to, to indicate, there's this requirement, this requirement, and this requirement. Give it all to the applicant once and just send them through the process, because there's nothing
Help, show on the organizational chart.
Yeah.
That that's the way it is.
Yeah.
It's one after unified leadership, so it's, it's really great.
Yeah.
One final question. We need an appointment to see you.
I would, I would prefer that. Only between the hours of twelve and one.
Right, please. Any further planning department report?
Um, the only things I wanted to let you know about is we are applying for the one-stop-for-growth application, so we're looking to get funding for the one fifty-one Water Main project that we were not awarded last year, so we're going back a second time. And, um, I think I reported this to you last time, too, is we are looking to hire a consultant to update our local comprehensive plan. So, uh, those applications are due, I think, June second. So, we are currently working through the process of putting together the best grant application you've ever seen, um, and we'll be submitting that on time. Um, we also are working on identifying a number of zoning changes that we might want to bring forward to the November town meeting, things such as, as I mentioned before, site plan review. Um, we do need to update our floodplain overlay district bylaw, so we have a model bylaw, and we've received some input from, um, some very smart people on how to update that, so we're currently working on that. There's also the coastal pond overlay district, which, um, as you may know, is a bit in flux considering the new regulations by DEP and the watershed permits that will be applied for shortly, um, by the, our wastewater division. So, that may have an impact on the coastal pond overlay district, and we might be able to eliminate it entirely, um, but we're still working on exactly when we might be able to release that, because again, with a watershed permit, whomever is included within the watershed permit, it all falls within the Board of Health's jurisdiction, um, on whether or not they'll need a denitrification system, can hook up to the sewer, et cetera, et cetera. So, we would no longer need to have that coastal pond overlay district, um, that, you know, requires the impact analysis and potential denitrification. Sorry, Jim.
Process-wise, is that going before the recertification committee before it gets here, or are those changes coming directly here, or what?
I'm not certain that we're going to continue with the recertification, um-
Do you have different consultants?
It's not that, it's that, um, that effort was challenging to oversee, um, so I have a vision, um, of something different, and I, you know, I want to try to just formulate that first and then bring it forward to, to you folks so, so that you understand how we want to proceed with zoning changes. But it took an awful lot of time to get through that.
It really did.
And we can do it a lot more efficiently and, and quicker.
Okay, Jim, you want to say something?
Just a question, yeah. Uh, now that you're going to be looking at those things, the biggest question that I have to deal with in my profession is what the town changing, where the rumor is that everything will be, come an IA septic system, and it'd be a requirement for everything in town, not just in border areas, and, uh, you know, Board of Health has come and made talks about that coming forward, this is something we all should be worried about and changing. It really affects my business a lot. Where do you see the timetable? You think, is this something that's going to happen in, in six months, a year, two years?
It's hard to say, because the Board of Health is currently working on some draft regulations, uh, related to IA's, and, um, my understanding is that they will be having public hearings at some point soon, um, but I still need to confer with the wastewater division on how soon they will be applying for those watershed permits, um, and if those watershed permits are going to take longer, then we may want to keep the coastal pond overlay district in place until all of them are applied for. So, the long answer is all of what I just said, the short answer is, I'm not certain. I really don't know yet. So, it's still a work in progress.
Other questions? Okay, um, committee reports.
Can we talk an announcement?
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet. I do not have a report this time.
Tom?
At the last recreation meeting, uh, Bob Brown's, uh, stepping down as our chair, he put in three great terms, uh, and, um, yeah, so, he'll be stepping down in June. Our committee chair for the recreation committee. You're talking about other committees?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just want to recognize Bobby Brown did, you know, wonderful job representing the recreation committee, uh, as a chair for seven and a half years, yeah.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
But you're going to continue on it?
Yep. Hoping to step in as the chair.
Cape Cod commission?
They just received our referral from, for the golf course, for the solar, and they're going to start bedding net soon.
Ah, ah, it'd be so sad to see those greens go, but it's a good thing for the town.
Well, they've asked me to be the chair for the hearings.
And did you accept?
Well, I, I may have to recuse myself from the hearings altogether, so we're trying to determine that now.
Ah.
With the legal department.
They'd be lucky to get you.
Because I'm a member of the golf course.
Ah.
And because, uh, they came in front of us once before.
Right, right. It'll be interesting to see what the decision is.
I'll let you know.
Yeah. Any other reports? No. Um, no announcements. Paul, do you want to make an announcement about the two fifty committee?
About what?
Two fifty. Weren't you going to say something about the-
No, I was going to say something else. Um, a very sad announcement. Jerry Peton, whom we all know, passed away on April eleventh.
I saw that.
Uh, and I'd like to at least acknowledge his effort in the town of Falmouth. He served in, uh, in the army in, uh, Vietnam, Operation Deadish Shield and Operation During Freedom. He was in the army for thirty years and retired as a colonel. He moved to Falmouth, became the wastewater superintendent for ten years. He served as a town meeting member. He served on the, um, conservation commission, the zoning board of appeals. Uh, he was really a basically nice guy, did a lot, worked for the town, and I think he's going to be sorely missed in the town, so.
Very, very easy to remember.
His service today was at the, uh, Saint, uh, Saint George's Greek Orthodox Church in Centerville, and he was buried at the, uh, National Cemetery in Bourne this afternoon.
Did you go?
I went to the service. I did not go to the cemetery.
Uh, uh, we mentioned a few minutes ago, the recertification committee, um, that worked with the ZBA, with the, uh, the staff of the ZBA and the planning board, the, uh, building commissioner's office, and town council on our long-running, with Pat, long, long-running recertification project that brought things to town meeting several different times, and Jerry was the ZBA representative on that committee for a long time, and he had a very, a very knowledgeable, but a very easygoing way about him, which helped move the work along. It was, it was really good to work with him, and I was sorry to read that he's gone. He's a very civic-minded. Other announcements? No. Future agenda items? Um, I, I have two. Uh, one is, um, about the short-term rental. We, we were supposed to be moving forward on that, and not, Pete Blon has been hurt since, and I hope something gets going.
I believe that, um, the April twenty-eighth select board agenda, there will be, um, I believe, interviews for that committee and appointments, at least the beginnings of, of the, that's my understanding, April twenty-eighth.
Because as I understand the goal, it's to bring something to the November town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So, going to be a cookie. And then, the other one I'd like to bring up, um, the last time we were discussing, we had Jed give us a presentation on the state task force on housing, all the different ways, um, the state came up with it, towns, communities could think about improving the situation with affordable housing, and, um, comments were made, including one of mine that was definitely picked up on, and I think that it might be a good thing if we had an education program initiated by the, by the planning board of what you are able to do now with the existing zoning, because many of the things that were named there, in fact, they're possible under our current zoning. We don't need to make any changes to make them possible. So, I would really like to see if there's any interest among you in sort of running an education program for people in town who are interested in affordable housing, in what you are able to do right now without any single change in the zoning, that the bylaws are already there.
Mayor Chair, I, I think I agree, but with what Jed has already mentioned and what's coming down from the state, and understanding the impact of this multiple ADU on bigger lots, until we hear and digest that, I think that should come first, because-
Why?
That's because it's a pretty significant change.
It is, but I'm talking about education, about no change.
No, no, but this is a state law that we can't do anything about. That's my understanding.
Yeah.
Until, I don't think, I, any of us understand that how the complexity of this is if you look at bigger lots and more than one ADU.
I don't see that as a barrier to understanding what the possibilities are within existing bylaws.
Okay, I was just making a point.
Yeah, I, no, I think what you're saying is true. I just don't see it as a barrier over here. Any interest in helping with-
Couldn't that be a, a newspaper, a section in the newspaper that, uh, do an insert? I mean, they've done that with other issues, where they've actually done a whole section where it's an educational piece, where, okay, everything you wanted to know about housing in Falmouth, this is it.
I think that's a great thing to do, but I think it would be, you know, the whole thing about trying to teach people about something is redundancy. If you can get them, you know, from all corners, a ways to learn, the newspaper's one, even though their, their subscriptions are not that numerous, is, is definitely one, but running a program might be another one.
How would you run the program, Charlotte? Would you do it at a night meeting like this, or what?
I haven't planned the program, but if you're interested in helping plan the program, I think that'd be great.
I just, I'm just curious, because-
Or would it be an FCTV?
Yeah.
Production?
That sounds good.
Because FCTV would be looking for-
That's kind of how we did the accessory apartment bylaw.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's how we did it.
And, and then, it's not just a one-off.
Yeah.
They keep running it.
Yeah, they, they run it over and over again.
That sounds pretty good. We could do a panel in the Herman Room, and FCTV could televise it as part of that.
Or you could have them do it in their stereo, where they have proper lighting, microphones, and everything.
Do all that.
Great color, it works much better if you're doing it in-
Yeah, the ADUs, it really works.
If you do it in the studio, as opposed to, the Herman, Herman Room is like, believe me, I think if you did it in the studio, you'd understand.
It would be better?
Yeah.
And it's done more of the-
Worked really well, didn't it?
More of a graphic format.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you could edit it.
Yes.
Oh, right, right. One would know enough to comb our hair in advance, so, who would like to work on that?
Speak for yourself.
Yes.
I, I, I'm very interested. I'd like to work on it.
Great. Okay, so, I'm making a list, ed program, Jim?
I think I might.
Pat?
Yeah, if we're going to be on TV, I'd-
So, the Three Musketeers again?
Eye for the camera, here he's ready to go.
Yeah.
Over here.
Well, we don't want to have a quarrel.
No, we can't have a quarrel.
Quarrel.
So, we can only have the three.
Yeah.
But you, if you have any questions, you just go to H, the FCTV, and you can see the presentation, it's still online, you can look at any time, you can see how it worked. It really did work well.
Yeah.
Okay, Jim, Pat, and Bob, if those are the three, who's going to head this up?
Bob.
Not me.
We'll manage it, don't worry.
We'll, we'll amongst ourselves.
I don't think we ever had a chairman or anything, we just worked it.
You kind of were, but we did everything together.
Yes, I was.
You were, you were.
So, we just need, uh, someone to collate the information that we want to disseminate, that's all.
Okay, so maybe we could get some support over there- Okay, so maybe we could get some support over there from the planning department. That'd be good.
Sure.
Great. Do we have a timeline?
Not at this point.
Will we soon?
Maybe never.
Maybe at the next meeting you could tell us the timeline.
I don't know. We'd have to talk about it.
Yeah.
And see.
Let's work backwards. When do we want to be presenting at the town? What's it going to town meeting? Or if it's not going to town meeting, what's the effect?
Doesn't have to go to town meeting.
So when do we...
We can do it anytime.
Then when do we want it to be finished?
So why don't we set November as the end?
Okay, that might be a good thing.
Pick the end, and we'll pick the beginning to meet.
Because we're going into summer.
Yeah.
People have people coming to visit, they're going someplace, and it becomes really difficult to coordinate, all of that.
Could we get it done before town meeting in November?
That's, was kind of my thought.
Yeah. And you don't want to go into the holiday season.
No.
Yeah, I actually have a little bit more time. I'm not running two companies anymore, it's only one, so I could probably...
Right.
But then you're not as easy to get hold of.
And you can provide all of the aerial shots to illustrate what you're doing.
I can, I can do that, yeah.
Right, you're handy. Okay.
I'm game. This is something I'm interested in.
This is good. Thank you. Thank you. I'm really glad about this. And general correspondence? I didn't see any.
There was only one, and it was what John mentioned. It was the acceptance letter from the Cape Cod Commission of your DRI referral for the Cape Cod Country Club solar project.
Oh.
So that was an envelope on your area, but I got a copy of it as well.
Ah. I was supposed to open that.
Yeah. It's just a copy of it.
Oh, okay.
We have a copy on file in the planning office.
Thank you. And our next meeting is May 13th?
Yeah.
Paul?
Agenda items.